Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July 11th, 2016 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of those we lost in Orlando last month and Dallas this week. These tragedies have brought us all together in our sadness. In a world too often divided, the horrible events in Orlando and Dallas remind us that despite our differences, we are all part of a shared community, a shared humanity. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson.
Present.
Alderman Beatty. Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Beer.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Genitazio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardiman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw. Alderman Smith.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Alderman Vitro.
Alderman Vitale.
Fourteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Fourteen present, and we do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker should be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three. Over. Over comment. Anyone wish to address the Board at this time, you do so.
Good evening. My name is Mike Nolan. This is my wife Theresa Nolan. We live at fourteen Robbie Circle. And we're here about the proposed sale of city-owned property at thirteen Pomona to the adjacent property owner. Our concerns are several with the... There are several concerns related to how the property was obtained by the builder. It should... That should not have happened in the first place. In addition to... Just specifically to the city-owned property, we had contacted the city about purchasing it ourselves a few years ago. We're told that it would not be sold. Now, a builder comes in from outside of town. We've been there for twenty years, and automatically it gets through the zoning... A planning and zoning board, just as the other people spoke earlier, without any notice to anybody, any of the abutting residents. Nobody found out about anything. We get a letter on July 1st that it was already approved and that we had to come here tonight to talk about it. He's already started taking down the trees that are on the city-owned property, obviously assuming that it was going to go through. He has threatened the... Us behind him that he's going to remove the entire fence that we have between our properties, and then he's going to take out all the plantings that we have because he owns five feet of our backyard. He did the same thing to the people on the opposite side of him and said that he had a survey done when we said we had our survey done, when we had our entire backyard is fenced in and so are all the other houses on Robbie Circle. Then he asked to see our survey. There's a lot of inconsistencies, so not really being concerned about other people's property line, only mine. We did measure out everything before we had our fence put up. We did check with all the other property owners. My yard is right on point where it should be. When I started doing research into the property that he now owns, it's one hundred and twenty feet from the street to my fence. His deed, all the survey maps, all the engineering maps going back to 1917, show that he owns a hundred feet. So, actually, not only does he not own any of my property, there's actually a twenty-foot gap between our two yards, which makes sense. I mean, how could somebody get something two hundred feet exactly? But there's... It just doesn't make any... You know, there's just too much going on that doesn't make any sense. And in addition, there was comments made about the property does have a drain. There's a storm drain going through that property because we have a storm drain in our backyard. We have a twenty-foot easement. That's a twenty-five-foot easement owned by the property. There's a lot of questions with engineering as to whether it is there. Some people are being told there is no easement. We know for a fact there is because I have the drain in my backyard that connects to it. There are some other people from the area, from our neighborhood that want to speak too, so we're going to stop at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Mayor. My name's Karen Telker. This is my husband Eugene. We're from fourteen Pomona Avenue. I'm here to make a comment on eight F, which is on tonight's agenda. There are two decisions the Board is being called to make. One, should the parcel owned by the city since 1961 now be sold? And two, who has the right to purchase this property? I oppose the sale of thirteen Pomona Avenue and request that this Board deny approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission's exclusivity provision limiting the bidding on the property only to abutting landowners at nine and twenty-one Pomona Avenue. The following are my reasons. I have lived in Milford over fifty years, with almost forty of those being on Pomona Avenue. Thirteen Pomona Avenue is directly across from my home. Mr. Renfrew, the new owner of nine Pomona Avenue, submitted a statement dated April 4th, 2016, in support of his petition to purchase the city parcel. It stated in part, and I quote, "This strip of land currently has large overgrown trees hanging over my property, brush and trash buildup," end quote. Almost every tree that belonged to nine Pomona Avenue has been cut down since it was purchased by Mr. Renfrew. As a result of his clearcutting his lot, all of the leaning trees are gone, as they appear to have belonged to his property, not the city's. The majority of brush has also been cleared, since it too appears to have belonged to nine Pomona. The handful of trees that remain on the city-owned property are straight, healthy appearing, and a beautiful shady buffer between the neighbors' homes in the area. As to debris, well, yes, unfortunately, not everyone is considerate about their coffee cups, soda cans, and snack purchase bags and drop them on streets as they go by. While this is inconsiderate, in itself, it does not rise to the level of warranting that this property be sold as the only recourse. The city has been very responsive in the past to tending to trees compromised by a storm or running a mechanical rake through the area to clear all branches, vines, or debris. It really only takes a phone call. The City of Milford's 2013 appraisal of the property valued it at $4,560. In a cost-benefit analysis of dollars alone, one would presume that the sale of this property will not net the city any appreciable funds, given the legalities and time involved in conducting all the necessary research in preparation of closing documents. If, however, the Board determines that it would be financially beneficial for the city to consider this sale, I would ask that the Board give equal weight to the benefit the parcel holds for the residents of the area, as well as the city as a whole. We are losing our open spaces at an alarming rate, and the population densities are increasing with housing clusters sprouting up along the city, along with the utility initiatives clearing a shocking number of trees along the snow shelf. What once were shady, quiet streets in our seaside town are looking more like stark, sun-scorched strip malls. Once natural open spaces are lost, even small parcels such as thirteen Pomona, they cannot be recovered or restored to the communities they were once in. While one person may benefit by purchasing thirteen Pomona, many residents benefit by the property remaining as city-owned open space. As to the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation that the proposed sale be offered exclusively to the abutting landowners at nine and twenty-one Pomona Avenue, this recommendation is discretionary and not mandatory, as was explained to me by the City Attorney's Office. There are no legal restrictions as to which Milford landowners may purchase City of Milford-owned land. I received a notice of tonight's hearing in the mail because I own property within two hundred feet of the city-owned land at issue. If I am deemed a party of interest for purpose of this notice, then it logically follows that I would also be a party of interest for purposes of bidding on property should it become available for sale. The fact that thirteen Pomona Avenue is not a building lot and it has an easement does not limit its value only to abutting landowners. Any legal, lawful purpose of the land, considering the easement, should be considered. I find it actually an irony that the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of exclusivity would extend the offer to buy city land only to two Milford landowners, both of who are not currently Milford residents, while excluding all of those who are. I urge you to reject the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for both the sale of the property, as well as to any future clause of exclusivity. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello. My name's Janet McAllister. I live at 197 Maplewood Avenue. I also am a Milford resident within the two-hundred-foot distance to that property. So, I'm going to keep it very short because that was a very eloquent and complete statement of opposition, but I would like to... I'm here with my husband, Tom Morris, who is seated, and we'd like to express our opposition to the sale of this property, particularly given the level of information that is known about the intentions of the property owner once that land is required. The things that we do know about it is that we have a builder from Oxford, Connecticut, that bought an old house in poor condition, demolished it, has entered into disputes over property boundaries with his neighbors, and then submitted a letter to the Planning and Zoning Board with very little information, just asking, "Can I buy this property?" Received permission to bid on it essentially with this exclusivity clause, and it just doesn't seem like that's a very prudent or fair way for the city to dispose of a piece of property, regardless of what people think of the value of it. I would like this... I think the city should learn and the... All the residents should know more about what's going to happen with that property. We just spent $1.6 million across town to buy a property that had high potential for going into a large multi-unit development. This property is much smaller, and the odds are less likely that something large would happen there, but the numbers just don't add up for this transaction to result in a single-family home to be added to our neighborhood of single-family homes. So, that causes me concern as well. And I just would not want the city to either deliberately or inadvertently be enabling the type of developments that we're trying to stop in many places around town. And finally, I would concur with the opinion that if the city wants to offer this property for sale, that any and all eligible people be able to make a bid on the property. So, thank you.
Does anyone else like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on June 5th, 2016.
Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Four. We didn't have any special meetings, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Report. I'd like to take a minute to thank our mayor, Ben Blake, our Julie Nash, our Economic Development Director, Public Works Department, Milford Police, and the sponsors for this past Friday night's Blast Off the Summer fireworks event. I think everyone that attended that thought it was a fantastic display, and everyone had a great time. Just wanted to give them a round of applause. Thank you all. Agenda Item Number Six, the Mayor's Report and the Recommendations. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Good evening, happy summer. Hope everyone had a good Fourth of July holiday weekend. I know that I did. It seemed to be extended an extra week with the fireworks on Friday, but I know we enjoyed it. Celebrated our independence with pomp and parades and festivities and illuminations from one side of Milford to the other. But by way of announcement, I do have a couple of good news items. Congratulations and kudos to Peter Arredice, our Finance Director, Ariane Swift, our City Accountant, who's in the audience this evening. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, has recognized the City of Milford again with their highest award of achievement for the financial practices of our Finance Office and our Accounting Office. So, kudos to them. Congratulations, Peter, and your team. And by way of another introduction, the City of Milford, for the first time, would like to introduce our newest officer of the municipality. The city, after much deliberation, many applications, many interviews by Chris Angeli, our Public Library Director, Paige Milleo, our Milford Arts Council Director, and their team have decided on and selected Milford's Poet Laureate. And Mick Thebes, as he likes to be called, if you can come to the podium to be introduced by our... Mick, I would ask that before you... Before you give any remarks, if you could come forward to our city clerk, Joanne Rorig, and be officially sworn in as the Poet Laureate of the City of Milford.
Congratulations. I need you to raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or sincerely affirm that you will carry out your duties and responsibilities as the first Poet Laureate for the City of Milford to help you God or under the painter penalty for perjury or false statement?
Thank you, everybody. I'll keep it short. Thank you, Mayor Blake. Thank you, Paige and Chris. This is the craziest thing that's probably ever happened to me, and I'm honored. I prepared a short poem, and basically it sums up my feelings on the whole appointment. "Here I am, Milford. The prodigal son returned, filthy and penniless, to cleanse myself in your pure winds and brackish waters. Here I am, Milford. Do you recognize me? I've grown since I left to see the wonders of the world through a haze of mist and smoke, but even through those throaty Russian toasts and pressure cooker explosions, I heard you whisper my name every night, wondering when I was coming back to you. Here I am, Milford, a volunteer foot soldier in the culture wars, to lead the charge with pen, not sword. I can't promise plunder or glory in the thousand days to come. I don't know if it'll be pretty, but I promise it'll be fun."
And Mick Thebes, Michael Thibodeau, is a proud graduate of Jonathan Law High School and Northeastern University, and we look forward to many years of poetry in the City of Milford. And with that, if you have any questions on Items 8A through 8K, I respectfully request your consideration and action on those, and I'm happy to answer any inquiries that come up throughout the course of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item, Agenda Item Number Seven, there is no unfinished business. Agenda Item Number Eight, moving on to new business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding grant application for consolidated housing and community development plan.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Question of the Community Development Director. Know that this is program year forty-two. I'm wondering if there are new awardees as part of the Community Development Grant, number one?
Yes, we do. Hi, Sheila Dravis. This year, the Department of Social Services, Human Resources, actually put in an application for a public service program. They rent and mortgage assistance. So, we're going to be... It's a... My understanding is it's a program they've been running with some other funding, and so they were looking for some additional. And so, they applied, and the committee granted that.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned Human Services and Human Resource?
Actually, it's the Department of Human Resources.
Okay. So, I did notice that in the...
Human Services, I'm sorry. I always get them mixed up. Yes, yes.
I'm glad you mentioned it.
Yes.
Glad you mentioned it because I did notice, if you look on page fifteen of the application, it does mention Department of Human Resource as administering rent application or rental assistance, rendering rental assistance, whereas on page twenty-three, the Department of Human Services is mentioned. So, there's a technical correction that needs to be made, I take it, on page thirteen...
Thank you.
Fifteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, great.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
No, they have their hands full, Human Services. Yes.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8B.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached agreement between the City of Milford and Southern Connecticut Gas Company concerning paving projects on Nogga to Cav, and to authorize the Public Works Director, City Attorney, and Mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached bid certification form for LREC/ZREC, solicitation of the United Illuminating Company, and to authorize the Public Works Director, City Attorney, and Mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said bid.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached Second Amendment lease, Second Amendment amendment lease between the City of Milford and the State of Connecticut for 4,797 net usable square feet of space on the first floor and twenty-two parking spaces located at 44-64 River Street, and to authorize the City Attorney and Mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said lease amendment.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor. With this lease comes the twenty-two parking spots. Could you please tell us your view of the new parking lot and the twenty-two spots and whatever other spots that may be within other people's leases?
Sure. Thank you, Alderman Bevan. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Alderman Bevan. This is a lease renewal for the property on River Street that the city purchased a little less than a year ago from the former agro site. They take up the majority of the building. It's about $100,000 a year in rental income, lease income, that the city derives from this just from the State of Connecticut, just from the Office of Probation. It's a little bit ironic that the State of Connecticut gave us $5 million to purchase the property, and now we're renting back a portion of the property to them for the next two years for $100,000 a year. Obviously, that's a good thing for the city. We are only extending this lease until June of 2018 because the Development Committee, which Alderman Vitale and Alderman Anderson are on, are moving forward with a market analysis, how to repurpose, how to reutilize that property in the best manner. For the time being, we recently, within the last two weeks, have repaved the lots from High Street to this River Street property. Repaved about 110 to 115 new parking spaces, or refurbished existing parking spaces. The plan, this is to your question, the plan is to move the $7 a day, $25 a week, $80 a month paid-for train parking, and that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, until 5:00, to the rear of that property towards High Street. Previously, it was located in the middle of the property, a long railroad half. It will be moved towards the rear, towards the High Street side. The middle section of that property, that long property that runs along Railroad Ave, will now be signed and demarcated for the tenants of the River Street property. So, the twenty-two spaces that previously were situated around the building on River Street will now be located towards the middle of the property. It will open up or free up the spaces along River Street for customers, customers of the bakery, customers of the corner convenience store, et cetera, as well as two-hour parking for people that want to frequent the downtown. People that want to go to restaurants and shops downtown that previously really didn't have a place to park in that area will now have two-hour parking. What is important to know is that after 5:00, the spots in the middle are free. The spots towards River Street are free as long as you move your car by the next day. So, anyone that wants to come down at night, in the evening, to go out to dinner, et cetera, there will not be a fee at this point. Things can change, and things probably will change based on the decisions and the recommendations of the Development Committee, but as of right now, the proposal, the vision is, at least until June of 2018, to have that free after 5:00 to everybody. And during the day, we've already installed some two-hour parking signs for anyone that wants to use that parking lot to park in and go shop or go to a restaurant for lunch. Again, things will change come June of 2018, but for now, that is the plan.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The one exception is Saturday mornings, that spot, that parking lot is utilized for the farmer's market, so there is an area closed off on Saturday mornings, and we even asked that on Friday evenings that people refrain from parking there overnight.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, my question is the Development Committee, 2018, it sounds, you know... you know, like it's far away, but it's going to be here relatively soon. If there is not a plan in place to redevelop the parcel, is it probable that this lease would, at that point, be renegotiated and extended?
Yes. We're only committing to the tenants at this point that will honor leases until June of two thousand eighteen. It's possible that the Development Company or Committee comes back with a recommendation that, that everything stays status quo, and that we continue on with this relationship. But, again, I think that they're looking at a variety of different programs. They went through a rigorous selection process. We did get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar additional grant from the state to do a market analysis, and with that funding, they have selected a team, a design team, to do the market analysis. I think they select, I don't know if it's been awarded yet, but I think they have awarded it to BL Company, so they're in the process of the study, the initial design, and I know that there's more, more to come in terms of information and presentations from the Development Committee.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, just piggybacking on Alderman Ginizzio's comment, being on the committee, we know that two eighteen is down the road, and, and there's a lot of steps to go forward before there's a shovel in the ground. So, will all of those terminating leases be flexible to the point where, if we don't get a shovel in the ground till two twenty, twenty twenty, that they will be able to stay there, or what would be that piece, as we understand it?
All of the leases in that building can be renewed. I think all of them have renewal provisions within the contract, including this one. So, if the date for a new development on that property does not happen as of May of two thousand eighteen, then all of these leases can be renewed.
I, I think probably if we focus on the fact that come two thousand eighteen, these people who have existing leases there are going to be making other plans, because it's going to be close, but I think, being on the committee, that we're going to have some perspective of time that maybe it'll extend another year or two years, or whatever, before we make final decisions on that property. So, as long as they know that, and get the word to them earlier, because there's no sense of having a vacant piece there for a couple of years, as we all know. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, agenda item eight E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request, following an approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes, to enter into a attached lease between the city of Milford and Susan Houson for unit fifteen, forty-six dash sixty-four River Street, and to authorize the city attorney and mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said lease agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Chairman. Either to you, Mr. Mayor, or the city attorney, looking at page three of eight E, it's titled Utilities, and it basically lists what the tenant's agreements are, and what is the landlord's agreement to what will happen with the property. And the very last item is snow removal parking lot. So, it's under the tenant's responsibilities, and it's also under the landlord's responsibilities. And if it's under the tenant's responsibilities, does that person have to pay for the snow removal of the whole parking lot, or is it something that's done between the tenant and the landlord? Because the rest of the list is very clear of who does what, but as far as snow removal, in my opinion, it's not really clear who's going to remove the snow from the parking lot. Could I get some kind of assistance on this? Thank you.
There's a provision where we're asking them to help out, but ultimately, it's the city's responsibility through the property management company. There's a long line of case law on the non-delegable duty doctrine, where even if you subcontract out snow removal through property management, ultimately, the liability still comes back to the property owner, in this case, the city. You cannot absolve yourself of any liability through subcontracting out snow removal. So, ultimately, the city's going to be responsible for the removal of snow on the parking lot, and we do have a, a management company that, that does hire a snowplow service.
As, as a follow-up, I see that the, the rent will be three hundred and fifty dollars. Will the tenant have to pay anything for snow removal of the parking lot, or is that part of the three fifty?
Again, this is on the River Street property, so this would just be one small little storefront within that entire complex. We're plowing and shoveling the entire complex anyway. This would be one vacant storefront, very small in scope, within the larger complex. This is, again, the, the same River Street complex that we've been discussing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ginizzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, I know originally, when we purchased this property, we were going to be good neighbors and, and good partners, and we were going to be flexible with the existing tenants in, in leasing the property, and allowing them to leave sooner than later, so if they find ample space elsewhere, they can protect their business. This, to me, is, is a unique situation. I'm actually surprised that we're entertaining bringing in someone. I know it's a small, relatively small business, and it's a small rent. I guess my question is to you, do we have more space available? I know, I, I believe possibly somebody moved out in the interim since we took over ownership, and are we going to continue, as a city, to try to keep this rented up to capacity?
I do know that one of the tenants came and asked for a contract amendment, so that, that person can be, could leave easier. I, I, that person or that entity is still in that location, has not moved. We do have our property manager, Bill Perry, here with us this evening, but from a standpoint of whether we're going to keep that building to capacity until at least June of two thousand eighteen, the answer is yes. Obviously, the more revenue that we can generate, the better for the city. It pays for the property maintenance of the, of that facility. It pays for some of the projects for that facility that we want to do down the road. All the costs for that facility, all the enhancements for that facility, to date, have all been paid for by the revenue that's been incurred from the rents and from the parking fees.
I guess I'm interested in maybe the fact of how this came to fruition. Did this, are we advertising, or was, were we approached by this individual? Because I wasn't under the impression that there was space available, so I don't know if the property manager could speak to that point, if this is something that you pursued, or someone contacted you?
She actually contacted us. I think she was looking for a spot downtown, something very small. Nothing like that really exists. If you can picture it, it's a very small, two hundred and eighty-eight square foot unit, no restroom in it. So, I know she was looking around. She happened to see the small unit empty on the back of the building. She's looking to do something where she captures some of the train folks coming or going. It's a, some kind of a self-contained shaving kind of a use, and she contacted us. We showed it to her. We figured we'd bring it to the city. Extra revenue would probably be a good thing. She knew two thousand eighteen might be the end date, so it worked out in, in everybody's favor, we thought.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate...
No problem.
I appreciate you letting us...
Any other questions? Is there running water in there?
No, there is not. There's no running water. So, what she did was, she went to Planning and Zoning. They sent her to the Health Department. She has a, it's sort of a water tank system, it's self-contained. Now, I've never seen it, but she went through the, the process, of course, and got her approval. So, we said, okay, if you can get that approved, then we'll move forward, and, and here we are.
It's amazing, on the approvals that we don't know about, that get approved.
I've never seen anything like it, to be honest.
There's no running water, there's no bathrooms.
Alderman Vitale, you mind going through the chairman?
I'm just responding.
Alderman Ginizzio was asking the question to the property manager.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Through you to the property manager. I, I'm just stunned at the idea that, you know, there's no running water, there's no facilities. I kind of thought that was part of the health piece there, and then we rent these things out, helter-skelter, as far as I'm concerned, and, and we talk about saving money, bringing more money in, and then we go to a management piece. We talked about this last time, so I'm really confused about what we're trying to do in the city.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Vecchirelli, agenda item eight F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request pursuant to the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes for the sale of thirteen Pomona Ave by sealed bid exclusively to the abutting property owners at nine and twenty-one Pomona Ave, with the conditions that the parcel shall not be used as a separate building lot, and subject to an easement for the continuance, continued use, maintenance, repair, and/or replacement of the existing sewer line, per the recommendations of the city attorney, and to authorize the city attorney and the mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said sale.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to exercise my aldermanic prerogative to recognize a couple of my constituents that had called me on the phone and wanted to address some issues. So, I'd like to call up Mike and Terry Nolan.
Good evening again. We spoke earlier. Again, we just wanted to express the fact that there seems to be too many unanswered questions regarding the sale of this property. Why would it be exclusive to only the people on either side of it? Our property abuts it as well. There is also, if I may pass this out, the, the reason he requested the sale from the city in the first place was because he said that all the trees were encroaching on his property. Those have all been torn down. There's about four trees left on the city property. They're all perfectly straight, as was stated by one of our neighbors, and there is nothing else encroaching on the property. Sealed bid. The, in addition, besides himself, the neighbor on the other side now lives in New Hampshire. The property's rented. She's got a six-foot-high vinyl fence around the property. She would have no desire to tear down a fence. She spent ten thousand dollars on, to buy a piece of property for who knows how long, so he's probably going to be able to come in and buy it for a dollar. It was assessed at approximately four thousand dollars. It's a twenty-five-foot lot. The lot next to it, the property at nine, is seventy-five feet wide. The land is assessed at eighty-one thousand dollars. So, now, if you increase that by thirty-three percent, what's that going to do to the value of the property versus what he's going to get it from, from the city? There's really just no need to do it at this point. As I said, the whole premise behind the letter that he sent to Planning and Zoning that was approved without any of the neighbors finding out about it, or any, or completely, secretly, for lack of a better term, are addressed. He tore all the other, all the trees that were encroaching on his property down, plus, from what I can tell without measuring over there, he's already taken down some of the city-owned trees on the city property, so that should probably be looked into as well before we sell property to somebody who may already be tearing down city-owned trees without any approval from the city. I don't know really what else to say at this point. I guess the decision lies in your hands, but you've heard the, our concerns, you've heard the concerns of the other neighbors. There is no benefit to the city, I mean, for the amount of your, your folks' time, our time, and what it's going to cost to draw up the paperwork to do this is probably less than what you, what will be gotten out of the sale. That's all I have to say at this point. Thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of different options. Again, this application went directly to the Planning and Zoning. Your board can table it for more information at a later meeting, and ask other city departments or other neighbors to weigh in. You could take this up at this meeting, approve it and deny it. You could take this up and amend the resolution, so it opens up the sealed bid to additional neighbors. You have a lot of different options if this is a agenda item that you wish to study more, get more information from neighbors, get more information from city offices. That's your prerogative as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Is Mr. Renfrew in, in the audience tonight, the, the buyer of this property, or one of his representatives? No? My next question is, would be to the city attorney, Ms. Kelly, maybe you could answer this for me. In the amend, or in the motion here, it will say that bid exclusively to the abutting properties with nine and twenty-one, and apparently, Mr. Renfrew just recently purchased nine, with the condition that the parcel shall not be used as a separate building lot, and subject to an easement for continued use. His request here is he's planning on, on building a new house on this parcel, interested in the adjacent twenty-five-foot strip of land, which is thirteen Pomona. Could you just explain, clarify that for me? If it's not to be used as a building lot, and he's buying it expressly for that purpose, what am I missing here?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, the request to purchase the property came in from this particular homeowner, but the board, as the mayor had indicated, can opt to sell to either abutting property owners or open it up to adjacent, other adjacent property owners, so it wouldn't necessarily be exclusive to this particular property owner who made the request. In addition to the conditions that were outlined in the motion, as far as the city retaining an interest or an easement interest in the property for whatever drainage or what have you over the property currently exists, then obviously, a condition of that easement would be that no building or structure could be erected over that easement area, giving the city access to whatever it needed access for.
What are, what are we discussing here? Excuse me, if I could, Mr. Chairman. What are we discussing here for the sale, if in fact, the motion most specifically precludes that possibility of selling it for, as a separate building lot? Maybe I'm not understanding that.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. It wouldn't be sold as a separate building lot, but it would, could be acquired by one or the other, or both of the abutting property owners, just as additional, as an additional piece of their lot, without necessarily building on it. From, from what I read of the letter, yes, he was interested in possibly fixing up or maybe rebuilding his house, but not necessarily on that piece of property that he's seeking the city to, to sell.
Thanks, there. Just as, as a matter of procedure here, our board, the Planning and Zoning Board has passed on this within the guidelines of our zoning regulations in town, but we, as a deliberative body for the city, have some other issues regarding the greater interest of the community, and I think the lady, if, I forgot your name, but from, I think you're on Robbie Circle, you said, the two lady, the lady and her husband in the back. You don't have to come up.
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to say, you had, you had, no, you had outlined, I think, very eloquently, some of the objections and the general objections that you have as not being abutting property owners, but being directly affected by it. My position on this, Mr. Chairman, is that at the very least, we would reject this tonight and study this a little bit further, because just on the face of the people that have come to testify here tonight, I think they have a pretty compelling argument as to why this shouldn't be immediately granted, just because the zoning board has passed it on to us. Thank you.
Alderman Ginizzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I would have to agree with Alderman Smith. I think at the very least, as well, I think we should open it up to the adjacent property owners. It seems like there's more interest with the surrounding property owners than the abutting property owners. But my real concern, and I, I heard the testimony from Mr. Nolan in regards to cutting these trees on city property, I don't know if that's accurate, and I'd like to ask the Mrs. Kelly, Attorney Kelly, if, are you aware of this? Is, is that... this? Is, is that, um, accurate information that we're hearing from the, um, the neighbor?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not aware. I haven't heard any reports of that until tonight.
Well, at the very least, I think we should look into that. I think the zoning enforcement officer should, um, as of tomorrow morning, should, should drive there. Because if that's the case, I take exception to that. And, um, I, I think that that's not the way that the city wants to represent itself in doing business. And I know that this person probably took the liberty of doing that, if that's the case. And I think that that person should be put on notice. So, um, I would have to, um, agree with, with my colleagues on this. And we could table it, but if we wanna just make it a bid to all adjacent property owners, I'd be willing to do that tonight as well. But I'll leave that up to, uh, the other members. Thank you.
Alderman Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you wanna add to the?
Yeah, just, I apologize. Is, so I understand you're saying to open it up to all the adjacent property owners, but is, at this point, and just not knowing the legality and the logistics of how these things happen, is not the city just keeping the property that they've owned for 60 years an option? I mean, to just keep it. There's, there's no, there's no danger to the new house he's building, as the city attorney said. He's concerned about, he's gonna repair the house. There's no house to repair. The house has been demolished. It's an empty lot. He started clearing the trees. As you said, I do not know if, just to clarify what I said, I don't know by, without measuring, if any of the trees that were taken down belong to the city. But this is a picture taken this evening, and I can bring it up to you. I mean, it definitely looks like there's a, you can see the, the neighbor's white fence. That's a lot less than 25 feet where you see the tree stump sticking out of the ground. So, I mean, I'm sure-
Mr. Chair, can he bring up the picture to show?
If you would like to share that picture with us, you may. Alderman Vitale.
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. It, Mr. Saley, Director Saley is in the audience. I, I, not that I'm doubting the information, as Alderman Genitazio is saying, but I was wondering if Director Saley has any idea of what's going on over there, and maybe he can have
Good evening, everyone. I honestly have no idea.
Should drive around the city a little. Thank you, Mr. Saley. Thank you, Director.
So, I'd like to help, but I, I can't.
Mr. Chair, uh, through you, to Alderman Vitale. Uh, if, it's the pleasure of your board, either to reject this at tonight's meeting, or to, um, put some other conditions on this, or to table it. Uh, starting tomorrow, I will ask that our City Public Works Director, um, review the, the parcel. That's a question right now, and, uh, address and assess the
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Alderman Beer. Continue.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Through you. Um, I too think this should be tabled, but I think it's, it's in front of us now, and it's probably worthwhile discussing a little bit. So I, I have a few, um, questions that maybe the, um, attorney can answer. One, can we put a minimum bid on this? Um, can we split the parcel and maybe the second half of the parcel, the abutting neighbor gets a first writ of refusal on the second half of the parcel? I mean, could we put some stipulations on the sale? That's question number one.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, you absolutely, it's your prerogative to put conditions on it as far as, uh, a minimum bid is concerned. Um, as far as splitting the property, we've, in the past, we would prefer to just sell it as one, and if two abutting landowners wanted to go in together, they certainly could do that.
And then if I could just make a comment on it. Again, I'm in favor of tabling this, but I know people are kinda anxious when things are happening in their neighborhood. But, I mean, if you could take a, a piece of land, add it to a piece of property, and develop that into a nicer home, I mean, at the end of the day, everyone's property value is probably gonna go up a little bit, and it might come back into a little more tax revenue for the city. I'm not saying I'm for the sale, but I'm just saying sometimes things, people get anxious, and at the end of the day, you know, it turns out to be not, not such a terrible thing.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, appreciate the, the, uh, citizens that came out tonight that are affected by this property. And, uh, I, uh, I, I don't think that we have to sell every piece of property that we have. Um, th- this is a perfect example where I don't have a problem, um, when neighbors agree that this might be the best thing for their neighborhood, and there's no objections. But in this case here, we do have objections. Um, and, um, I, I just don't see the need for us to sell this property at this time. Whether we sell it to the adjoining property owners, or somebody that lives down the street, um, I think we should probably just keep it and, uh, leave it as is. Uh, it gives a, a little habitat for wildlife over there. And, uh, I don't see why we, uh, we have to disturb it. I am looking forward to, uh, seeing if, uh, anybody cut down the trees over there that, uh, would affect that property. Uh, but, uh, I would hope that, uh, we just move forward on this and vote it down tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Um, I, I was just curious if the, the city's currently doing any maintenance at all to this piece of property? Is there something that, uh, are, are we maintaining it? And something may, maybe the mayor, Public Works Director knows.
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Grant. My understanding is, uh, it's not routinely maintained for grass cutting and things of that nature, but there is a drainage, uh, component to it, where there is a drainage, uh, pipe that runs through it, a culvert that runs through the, the property that, uh, the city does have to maintain on a periodic basis in order to ensure that there's, uh, no backups or clogs, or sediment and debris that gets stuck.
All right, thank you. And, um, I mean, definitely, I'm glad that, uh, so many neighbors came out and expressed their opinion, because it's, it's always good to hear from the neighborhood and hear what's best for them. I mean, they definitely know what's, uh, in their area. So I agree that we should just be voting on this this evening and voting it down.
Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I'm a proponent of keeping open space, and I think that, you know, if, if we put it out, and everyone wants to bid on it, and then what are they gonna do with it, and then people feel the right to cut down trees on something that's not even theirs. I just think that we should just keep it as open space, and, uh, we don't need to table it, and we don't need to sell it. Why not just leave it as it is, and keep some open space, and somewhere for animals to go, and, I mean, it's not that much of a space anyway. Who really cares when it comes down to it? Thank you.
Alderman Genitazio.
Uh, I'd just like to make a comment. Um, I do agree with what's being said. And furthermore, for the record, the property owner that's interested in purchasing the property has not even shown up to this meeting tonight to, uh, state his case. So with that being said, I would, um, I would definitely vote against this. Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I also am just making a comment that, because trees have been taken down, whether it was on city property or not city property, based on that and that we're asking the tenant here to, um, not be used for a separate building lot. If, if trees have been down, I can't see that the separate building would not happen also. So I, I will be voting no on this also.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Unless there's another colleague who wishes to talk on the motion, I would move that we deny the request.
Well, is there any more discussion? Or we'll put it to a vote. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair, just to, just to clarify, the initial motion that was brought by Alderman Veccharelli was a motion to approve, so a, a no vote denies it, and a yes vote approves it.
Does everyone, all the board members understand that?
Like to move the question.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Mayor.
Is there, is there a, a secondary motion? Did you make a motion against seconders? Well, just on the original motion. Yeah, okay. We're just on the original motion.
I was just gonna make sure there's no more discussion. Not what we want. But I wanted, he wanted to make sure that everybody understood the motion.
Yeah. We're just on the original motion.
So we're still on the original motion. All the discussion is over. We're gonna put it to a vote. All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman, Alderman Beatty. Please speak up.
I would like you to read the motion out loud that we're voting on, even if it's written in front of me.
Absolutely. Alderman Veccharelli. Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request pursuant to the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board of the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statute for the sale of 13 Pomona Ave by sealed bid exclusively to the abutting property owners at 9 and 21 Pomona Ave, with the continued use, maintenance, repair, and/or replacement of the existing sewer line per recommendations of the city attorney, and to authorize the city attorney, the mayor to take, uh, to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said sale.
All right, so all in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, sir. Because it is, uh, 8-24, I'd like to ask for a roll call.
Roll call, vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Gurman?
No.
Alderman Genitazio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
No.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman?
No.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Veccharelli?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
13 no, one yes. Motion fails. Alderman Veccharelli. Agenda Item 8G.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request pursuant to the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes to allow the owners of 262 Point Beach Drive and 16 and 20 Westmore Road to construct a driveway access within the right-of-way of Westmoreland Road, subject to the attached agreement, and to authorize the city attorney and the mayor to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Do we have a second? We have a, motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Attorney. Once again, thank you for coming back or staying here for this evening.
No problem.
On this driveway coming into the two proposed, uh, buildings, while they're looking at the driveway, it looks as though there won't be access for, uh, fire equipment to service those two, those two houses. Is that true?
Well, these, these plans are, are subject to further review by the, uh, city departments. And, uh, I know that, uh, Gary Marshall, our, uh, Gary Baker, our Fire Marshal, will review these plans typically on, um, what are known as rear lots. Uh, the Fire Marshal's office requires sprinklers to-
Alderman Beer.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, through Attorney Lynch. Um, looking at the, the map in my book, is this an 80-foot-wide parcel we're looking at here? It doesn't have dimensions on the, the blown up.
No, there's two, there's two 40-by-100-foot lots.
So 40 by 100, so.
Right, right. There's two, there's two building lots.
They're already, they're already separated and approved?
Yes, they were approved, they were approved. Certificates, uh, were issued from the zoning office, uh, um, back in 2007.
So we're really just discussing the access?
Exactly. Right, the lots have already been approved. Houses are gonna go up on those lots. It's how do we access them?
Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Attorney Lynch. Is that, so Westmore, is that a paper road that goes through there, and what's?
Well, as I stated in my presentation, Dan, it's a paper road from the termination of the field houses that were constructed back five years ago on the, uh, far westerly portion of the property, or westerly portion of the road. And then there's the tidal marsh in between, and then actually, uh, what you're seeing on the map there is now out of the wetlands, and that's what we're proposing to put the driveway in, uh, within the right-of-way of the, the far southeasterly portion of Westmore Road.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Attorney Lynch. My question is, why aren't you requesting this to become a city street? Or have you requested, and were you denied at some point for some reason? Um, why is this before us as a driveway? I, is this the only way that you can grant access to this? Is, is because the owners of the property are gonna pay for the driveway?
No. Quite bluntly, during my presentation, I thought I laid it out. Uh, there's the presence of wetlands in this portion of Westmore Road. There's, and you can see it on the, uh, the overlay that I gave you. There's a, uh, row of arborvitae's and a large tree. So in discussions with Chris Saley, who's here, and I don't know if Chris wants to weigh in on it, Chris met onsite with my client and with, uh, Bob Weeway of Cota Spody, as well as Mary Rose. And this was basically, okay, we could blast this open and put in a 50-foot-wide road, which is normally what you do. But in this particular case, with the lack of, uh, future extension of the road either direction, either coming from the existing area of Westmore or going westerly on the portion that you have before us, uh, it was felt that, uh, irrespective of the cost factor, uh, it was gonna be a good thing for the city. The elevation is high there, so that there would be the, um, uh, the problem of actually, uh, bringing the road up to a, uh, elevation where, where a retaining wall would be required, and with the wetlands and the trees, that's why this was designed the way it was.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. So you are granting public access in this driveway request?
The public access exists. So what Attorney Kelly drafted really addresses the fact that there is an existing public access. What my client is going to do will not disturb that.
Right. I guess my concern is the width. You mentioned in your submission 15 feet.
Right.
And you just mentioned that, I guess, a city street is 50 feet.
The right-of-way is 50 feet, correct.
Okay, so, you know, I'm just, uh, the reality is, if somebody's pulling down the street, and someone's exiting from a rear house, coming up the street, what happens next? I mean, can they pass each other safely, or is one person gonna have to back up?
Well, I think common sense has to come into play here. I mean, really, in effect, who's gonna be driving a car up that street? Really, only the two people going to their houses. But, on the other hand, if you live in the condominiums next door, and you wanna go out and walk your dog, yeah, that is available for the person who wants to go walk his dog within the right-of-way. And I think that the conditions that are laid out in the agreement that's been presented to you addresses that. So I think from a practical point of view, there's not gonna be passing traffic. The reality is, again, in my mind, the only people that are gonna be driving a car up that road are gonna be the two homeowners trying to, uh, pull into their driveway. But it does not infringe upon the rights of others to do anything that they want to within, within that right-of-way.
And this came from the Planning and Zoning Board with a favorable recommendation?
It was voted unanimously.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and if I can jump in there, just- Yeah, and, and if I can jump in there, just, I'm gonna take this opportunity to address one of the comments that was made by the neighbors. There was a series of actions that were taken since January 1st to try to do what we're doing here tonight. And the first blush was to file an application with the zoning board of appeals to get a variance of the city's regulations that call for frontage on a city street or a municipally acceptable street. And in discussions with Attorney Kelly and with Joe Griffith, the Office of Planning and Land Use, we all came to the decision, and again, Attorney Kelly weighed in, weighed in heavily on this, that it would be more appropriate to file this application under 824 so that there was never any thought that there would be a road abandonment, there would be no variance of the zoning regulation that requires frontage on a city right-of-way or a city street. And this really addresses that. So-
Well, that goes to your point.
So it went, it went, we were gonna get a variance. We decided not to do that. We then went the 824 route, and the application to the Planning and Zoning Board is not a public hearing. So there was no requirement of sending out notices. It's, it's noticed in the Milford Mirror as part of the agenda, but there was no requirement of sending out letters. And I may stand corrected.
Mr. Chairman, just one last, one last question.
It may be a public hearing item, Deborah. I don't-
Attorney Lynch, I just wanna be clear, so-
I'm trying to answer your question.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm learning as I go here. The road, if it's a road, then the stipulation for inland-wetlands is, is subject to change. And being that you're using the driveway approach, you're exempt. Is that fair?
There was no need to file an application to the inland-wetlands agency. That's correct.
Okay, so that answers my question.
Right.
Why we're, why we're going in this direction?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and again, not to belabor it, but I wanted to address the question as to why there was no letter sent out when we went before the Planning and Zoning Board. That's not a requirement of an application to the Planning and Zoning Board. It was a requirement for tonight's hearing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Attorney Lynch, good evening. Just a couple of things that I'm hearing, and I'm not familiar with the PNC kind of thing because it just, they confuse me. I mean, with a lot of issues in the city anyway. But you said to Alderman Bevan's point of a fire apparatus getting down the road, you indicated the fact that there has to be sprinklers and everything else. But I don't know if you answered that question, 'cause no matter whether you have sprinklers or not, you're still gonna have to have fire apparatus going down the road.
A fire apparatus can go down a 15-foot driveway. You'd have to go down and then back out.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to turn around.
Right, so, and then you indicated the fact that you gotta talk to the Fire Marshal and see what other kinds of things that you need to do. Are, is it, is it too early to, for us to vote on this because there might be other variances or other issues that the Fire Marshal might be putting on you guys as to what, before you go forward on it? And I guess my other part of the question is, the homeowners in the area are talking about flooding and runoff and all this other kind of thing. I, I don't know if Director Salee can say something about this particular piece of property? Is there a lot of runoff? It's pictures worth a thousand words that there's flooding back there, and there seems to be a lot of muddiness and upheaval there when, when waters and snow accrue. So is that gonna be addressed or?
Well, sure. And again, they're two, they're two legal building lots. They're approved legal building lots. So this is what means of access do we give to those lots? And in terms of final plans for the driveway, I know there's a storm drain at the end of the driveway. Is that gonna be expanded? Does that tie in? Are there gonna be other drains within the driveway to come down? Those are engineering questions, and they will clearly have to be submitted. Plans will have to be submitted to the Engineering Department for that.
Just enough concern, Mr. Chairman. So would it be more prudent to know the final plans before we make a vote on this? I, I'm just asking, I, I'm, I don't know-
I think you have a certain, to answer your question, I think you have a certain comfort level of knowing that any driveway is gonna have to be constructed to standards set by the Engineering Department and the Public Works Director.
Would it extend at no expense? I mean, would it, would it get to a point where it would be so expensive that it would not be prudent to develop? Or is this normal process here?
That's, that's an economic question for my client to decide. It's not really part of this board's review, really.
Well, I, I don't think I have enough-
And the worst-case scenario is that she, she would have to put in a municipally standard street. That's the worst-case scenario.
Alderman Beer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Attorney Kelly, I guess. So, so we allow this application to go through as a driveway. And they put two houses up. And it floods, like the neighbors say, it floods. Now we have two Milford citizens living in a house that they just purchased that potentially they can't get to because we built a driveway, not a road. I don't know what the drainage situation is. I'm just thinking, I'm just giving you worst-case scenario. So these people can't get to their house. Now they're calling the, the mayor. And they're saying, "Mayor, we can't get to our house. There's water in the road. We haven't been able to get in for two days because it floods." Are we in any way liable for these people that bought a house in a potential flooded area, for whatever reason? Can they come back to the city and, and we end up putting a road in or any other kind of stipulation? Or can we hold the homeowner in some responsibility for, you know, once they subdivide this and sell these two houses and they put the money in their checking account, who's responsible for these people to get to their house? The people that bought the house? People that sold the house? So can you answer that for me?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The application that's before you this evening is just to permit the driveway access on a city right-of-way. The applicant will still have to go through all of the, all of the other hoops of all of the other departments with their site plan approvals, engineering approvals, Health Department, Planning and Zoning, inland-wetlands if there's any impact. So it still has to run its course. What's before you tonight is just to allow them the driveway access over a city right-of-way.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I have a couple of, a couple of questions and maybe a couple of statements here, but at one point in time, and looking at this map, we had Mr. Tyler Lewis and his wife, where they did not have any problem with water in the back of their yard. They're, they're having problems now. But I, and it seems, I think Mr. Lewis owned this property at one time. He tried to do something very similar to this where he, you know, he might be able to develop that area for some building lots. And it seems as though he, from his testimony, that he was denied that. Then, so he, he sells that property off because, you know, he, he can't really develop it without, I guess, a great expense. But, so we have new property owners, and the new property owners, they're, they're trying to do what Mr. Lewis, what he was trying to do, develop that property. But Linda Stock, when she was with the Planning and Zoning Board, had said that you gotta, you gotta put a road in there. They're not gonna let you do the driveway. And then the Public Works Director, the old Public Works Director, similarly, it's like, no, you gotta put the, you gotta put a road in there. No driveway. The road's gotta go in. So it seems as though there's been a denial for accessing this area unless you put a road in. And, well, I guess putting the road in, I don't know if it's gonna cost a lot more than if they just put the driveway in, but it seems to be that's what everybody wanted back then. And now, maybe there's a change of heart that there would be some allowance or worthy of consideration to put the driveway in. The, the big concern that I have here is the people, especially Mr. Lewis with the flooding in the back of his yard, you know, it, it doesn't seem, I don't think that there's a, a large cry here to keep, to keep people from developing this property. I don't think people, you know, are, are against them being able to do this. But I think what they're afraid of is that since this property has been looked at for the possibility of building lots, from what I understand, there's been some work in and around the property, maybe trying to fix it up or move some trees or, or whatever. But ever since that, it's like, okay, now we have like a water problem. Now, if we have to, you know, obviously, who's ever gonna develop this are gonna have to raise the level up of that right-of-way for the driveway. And they're gonna have to raise up the property so that they are gonna meet a certain grade. And then they'll raise the houses up accordingly to whatever the flood zone is over there. So there's gonna be fill moved in, there's gonna be, you know, there'll be a lot of disturbance and grading and filling done over here. My, my main concern is tonight, I don't really think I have enough information in front of me to safely say that should we allow a driveway? Or should we maybe go with the road? If either one of those choices is still going to cause a substantial amount of runoff into adjoining properties to cause them a hardship where their properties are now flooding, I wouldn't be in favor of, of either one. But in this day and age, I'm sure that there are ways that we can take care of drainage. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I certainly think that we really should, you know, have something from the city engineering and maybe even the Public Works Department that would tell us that we're not creating a bigger problem here than we already have. So, I mean, I'm not for and I'm not against the, the property being developed. But I am, me, I am concerned, as we have the people in the audience from, from both sides of the aisle, that they're both concerned. One wants to develop the property, the other people wanna make sure this is done in a way that everybody can be happy. So my thought is, is that, and I know that we're still in discussion here, and I, I, that's fine, but I think that after discussion is over, I wouldn't mind seeing this postponed maybe to the next meeting, possibly, or even the meeting after, to where this board can further investigate from some of our city agencies as to the possibilities of the impact of going further with the, allowing the, the driveway as opposed to the road. And then in either-or, do we have drainage ideas of how we're not going to impact these other properties back there and cause a bigger problem? So I know I talk a long time, but that's my thoughts on this, and I, I kinda hope that we can make everybody happy, but we might need more information. Thank you.
Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Attorney Kelly. Attorney Kelly, can you explain to the board, the members of the board, why this applicant or this is before us without having the Fire Marshal's approval prior to and other municipal agencies' approvals? Why, shouldn't we be looking at this last for granting access after the fact that everything else is already addressed? I mean, we talked about getting safety vehicles down the road. Attorney Lynch alluded to the fact that the Fire Marshal's gonna grant sprinklers in these, in these homes, which is logical. It's a logical answer, and I'm sure it's been done before. But shouldn't he have that approval prior to him coming to us, asking for access?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is the proper due course to first obtain the access. And then obviously, we have to rely upon the expertise of our other departments and officials to weigh in as the application goes forward.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'm gonna weigh in. If this is the proper process, based on what you're telling me, what I'm hearing, then I feel like we're not disputing the fact that they're pre-existing non-conforming building lots. We all know that, okay? But the driveway, to me, is non-conforming. If you want access to these properties, you need to pay or design a city street. And you need to address all of these issues that we're bringing up, which is safety, drainage, inland-wetlands. Because in my view, if you're gonna do it, do it right. That gentleman on the end over there, he said it when he made his submission. He says he's not against you building your houses and having access, but if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it right. You know why? Because the city's granting you the access, and we're gonna own it. So if that driveway isn't built to spec, or if it fails, and it doesn't last as long as a city street where you have curbs and you have catch basins, then we're gonna be on the hook. And all these people are gonna be calling us complaining about your driveway that we own. So I'm not in favor of it. I would be in favor of postponing it. And if you can get other approvals and you come back before us with that, with some logical answers from an engineer, then I would consider it at that point. But tonight, I'd have to say, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't support this. Thank you.
Alderman Beer?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just give a little direction to the Attorney Lynch for his client. I'm not so sure we need a 50-foot road. We just need access that is gonna be adequate to serve these two houses. So I don't know if we wanna talk about that or just, you know, I, I think, I don't, I don't think what, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for Alderman Genitazio, but I don't think he's saying we need a 50-foot road. We just need a road that's gonna, that's gonna work and, and not come back with, with future problems. Is that be accurate?
Yeah, I'm a reasonable guy. I mean, you know, it's-
I don't know. I stood here watching you point your finger at my client and ready to jump off the table. Tony, with all due respect, that was not professional.
Well-
That wasn't professional. I think you owe the lady an apology, I really do.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to make the point-
I mean, if you wanna yell at somebody, yell at me. I'm here representing her.
Yeah.
But what you just did was inappropriate.
Okay.
Okay?
Well-
I think you owe her an apology.
I, I, I didn't mean it in that way.
Point a finger, point a finger at her, you owe her an apology.
I'm, I just get very passionate about what I do, you know?
I guess that's not an apology, right?
Yeah, well, no, I, I am apologizing.
Okay, thank you.
I am apologizing. But, you know, I'm just saying, I just think it needs to be, you know, something of more substance. That's all. Thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Lynch. I'll try and diffuse that situation a little by asking for clarification for something that you said.
Sure.
My understanding is we're here looking at the approval for the driveway access within the right-of-way of Westmore Road so that you can effectuate the agreement with the city for the terms you want, for the legally-approved lot-
Right.
-building lot. And you clarified for us why planning and zoning was the critical piece and not wetland despite the public testimony. But you also said the buildings are going through regardless, that that's approved. And that's not true. It needs the approval of this board. And it is our purview to address the driveway access. And we really don't have to give reason, and we are not the engineers of whether it needs to be a road or a driveway access, but the driveway access and this approval that you're seeking makes the building on that, those lots contingent upon that approval. So I just, you know, you did-
I must disagree with you.
You said that the building is going forward. It just needs the, the approval. You said that the building is going forward, it just needs the approval.
They're approved legal building lots.
I know, yes, you did say that, I know that.
And as I made the comment, I think, to Attorney Giannatassio, that the worst-case scenario here is that my client has to put up a city road.
Is a major road, yeah. No, before that, before that, because I've been trying to get this into the record for quite a while.
And the whole purpose of this application was...
Is to seek approval.
Not to go into the wetlands, keep the trees up, okay, and to have something that doesn't disturb the neighborhood.
You have the approvals, I understand that.
And the plans have to be approved by the Engineering Department.
Yes.
Okay, so drainage is one of the, one of those items that are reviewed by Greg Podolski, and Cottis Spody and Associates is a highly reputable engineering firm who, for many, many years, has designed houses and has designs for drainage, and they would be implemented in these plans. And also, one of the conditions is, again, to address what Mr. Alderman Giannatassio was talking about, condition number four, the city...
I'm not discussing that, though. My question wasn't about that, it wasn't a follow-through.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to respond to your question. And one of the conditions in this document is that the city reserves the right to improve West Moore Road. So in theory, if this driveway went in, and it didn't work, the city could then insist that the road go in. So there is a condition in this document that covers exactly what your concerns are.
Thank you.
And this isn't something that we just, you know, didn't give a lot of thought to.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three oh two, Attorney Lynch. There's a lot of confusion here on this board, as you well know, as you can see. And there seems to be process here. You know, where do we go? Do we go, do you come back to us to say, this, this is what it really's gonna look like? We, neighbors, you don't have to worry, because this is what's gonna happen, you're not gonna get the flooding and all this kind of thing happening. I'm just concerned that I may vote with not enough information, and maybe all the information is out there really, because you still have a ways to go to get all the approving and so forth. I would like to make a motion to postpone until we get more information from the other departments as to how and what, and give more credence to the fact that we are convinced that there won't be flooding, erosion, runoff, and what all those other kinds of things. So I make, I move to postpone.
Motion has been made, and seconded to postpone this application or this motion on the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
No.
Alderman Beattie? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Gorman? Alderman Giannatassio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardeman? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, if I may. Is the Board looking for more information from my client? Or is the postponement for you to receive input from, say, the Public Works Director?
They're looking for more time to get information from all the other city departments.
Right, is there anything that you're looking for us to do? Is there anything we can, we can get to you in the meantime that would be helpful in that regard?
If there's anything that the Board members require, they'll be in contact with you.
Okay, or through Attorney Kelly's office. Okay, thank you.
The vote was thirteen one, the, the motion postponed. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item H.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the sale of certain delinquent tax and sewer use liens to a third party in accordance with the provisions of Section twelve dash one nine five eight and seven dash two five eight of the Connecticut General Statutes and the condition, conditions as contained in the attached request for proposals. The minimum sale price shall be the full amount due to the city. The mayor, in consultation with the city attorney, finance director, and/or tax collector, is authorized to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate the said delinquent tax and sewer use lien sale.
Motion has been made, and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
There was a great deal of information in our packet about the proposed RFP process to, to have, to allow the sale of liens, and we've done this in the past, I realize, but I'm wondering, the missing piece is what the universe of liens are, how many of them are, and if you can ballpark, Mr. Mayor, what the, what the approximate amount is, and that would be one question, then my other question would be concerning the sewer liens. On average, on average, what, what's the size of sewer lien that is, that we would be looking to, to have an agency dispose of on our behalf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Anderson. This is the same RFP that we've put out for a while now. We actually did not do it last year, the last time we did it was June of 2014. There are a couple of safeguards for property owners, residents. For example, there is a one-year period before anyone who purchases a property can move forward with foreclosure proceedings. The city has the right to purchase back from the bid winner. But in terms of Alderman Anderson's direct question about the universe, that universe does change up until the day of the closing, after the bid is awarded even. There are certain parcels that are scrubbed off the list. I actually can run back to my office and get you a list of all the delinquencies, all of the outstanding tax liens that the city has, but it's not really a good picture, because there's certain hardship cases, certain properties that have a present payment plan that's been negotiated with attorneys, or just the property owner and the tax department, that do not get placed on this list because they're under a payment plan proposal with a hardship. There's also certain properties that, for one reason or another, sometimes it's because of contamination, sometimes, or suspected contamination, sometimes it's for another reason, that even though there is a significant tax lien, the city is not moving forward with putting, placing this on the list or foreclosure proceedings, because it'd cost the city more money. The city attorney's office, if this is approved, will work with this tax office to put together a universe like they've done the last several occasions when they put this out to bid. I can share with you a list of all the outstanding tax liens, I could share with you the list that gets put out for the closing, which will probably not happen for at least another thirty days. If there are properties on the list that any of the Aldermen are aware of, that are a hardship case where there's medical issues, that payment plans need to be worked out through the property owner and the tax office, that's always something that the tax office entertains, please bring those to my attention, or to the city finance director's attention, and alternative arrangements can be worked out, certainly. I don't know if I answered your question, Alderman Anderson.
Well, one of the questions that I had was with regard to the sewer liens. I, I would take it that we're talking about commercial properties mostly, although there would be some residential as well, and what would the average size sewer lien be?
Well, the, the commercial liens are different from the residential. The residential are generally about $300 a year, no matter how many toilets or sinks you have in your home, so those are relatively de minimis, commercial properties. There is no threshold that's been instituted via this RFP to where they would be placed onto the lien, but generally, if there's a sewer lien that's associated with a tax lien, both will be addressed at once for expedience sake, and, because that's the normal course of how it's always been handled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item eight, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution, establishment of accounts related to police application fees.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item eight J.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding the CDBG-dr interstructure repair grants from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing for additional funding for flooding study and drainage improvements at the Milford Point Road and Bayview Beach in reconstruction of Morningside Revetment.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just as a little bit of background, I'd like to call your attention to the fact that this is another million dollars in additional grant funding that the city is receiving for some of our drainage projects and our storm resiliency projects. Three existing projects that are already underway, the Morningside Revetment, the Point, I'm sorry, the Milford Point Road project, which is in the final stages of design, actually. A public hearing happened last week. And finally, the Bayview Beach Drainage Project, which is under design right now. The, the design team has actually recommended a new component, a new pump station component, which is why the additional $400,000 is being recommended for that project. But this is good news. Again, it's strengthening our public infrastructure along the shoreline and making our coast more resilient.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item eight K.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached Director of Health employment contract as required by nineteen A dash two hundred of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the mayor. On page one of eight K, it references dates of this agreement as being January fifth of 2015, to a term of four years ending July, I, January fourth, 2019. Well, it is now 2016. Should this be going from two thousand, January 2017 to January 2021? Or is this something that we're catching up on?
Alderman Bevan, I'm gonna defer to Attorney Kelly, who helped draft the agreement, but this was precipitated by the fact that a new law, effective July first, 2016, came onto the books, became a state statute this last legislative session, but again, Attorney Kelly did draft the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, the, the dates in the agreement are accurate. The January fifth, 2015 date is the date that Ms. Joseph commenced her duties as Director of Health, as she was appointed by this board. It is a four-year term, that's also pursuant to the agreement, the only, I'm sorry, pursuant to the statute. The only change in the statute was actually requiring that a written contract be in place outlining that during the term of office, the director shouldn't have any financial interest or engage in any employment transaction or professional activity that is in substantial conflict with the discharge of her duties. So the reason this contract is before you is due to this public act, which is newly enacted. But all the other terms of her employment remain the same, so it does date back to her initial appointment from January of 2015.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine, there is no other new business. Agenda item number ten, moving on to budget memo transfers, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item number ten A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consideration of budget memo transfers, number nine, and number ten, Fund Ten, FY sixteen.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item number eleven, moving on to refunds, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item number eleven A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consideration of refunds in the amount of $9,754.16.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item number twelve, reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees? Seeing none, move on to Agenda Item number thirteen, special committees. Is there any reports of any special committees? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do a small report on the Park Beach and Recreation Commission. At the last meeting, they did make known that the two turf fields on Orange Avenue across from Platte Tech and next to the YMCA, they are both on schedule for being finished this time this year, but they are on schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bevan. Any more, any more special committee reports? Seeing none, move on to Agenda Item number thirteen, or number fourteen, there is no executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.